Mr. Board Secretary, is this meeting being advertised in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act?
Yes, it has. Just come out to the room.
Mr. Board Secretary, is the microphone on?
Apparently not. Let me see how it works. They were running earlier.
Very nice. Good job. Okay, everybody please stand and join me in a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Mr. Bautista.
Here.
Mrs. Bakker.
Here.
Mr. Bishada.
Present.
Mr. Brzezinski.
Here.
Mr. Sayak.
Here.
Mrs. DePinto.
Here.
Mr. Rakuya.
Here.
Mrs. Trapp.
Here.
And Mr. McCallum.
Present.
We leave the executive session. This evening, executive session of the Board of Education discussed under attorney-client privilege, SCA grievances, SCA member potential job abandonment, negotiations, Sable's Principal Association contract, Sable Education Association's contract, personnel, interview director of special services.
Thank you. We have no presentations this evening, Dr. O'Fana?
No.
So, everybody should have received the technology and the monthly maintenance work order reports. If anybody has any questions or concerns, you can see the D A about those. Everybody should have received the minutes posted on the portal for regular executive sessions from July 17th and the regular executive sessions of our last August 21st. Anybody have any questions, comments, additions, or deletions of the minutes? Mrs. Bakker.
For July 17th, I had asked at the last meeting where we had the executive sessions for the HIBR reports to include the attendees in the minutes.
Yeah.
You have here to include the parents. I wanted to make sure it was changed to attendees, not just parents.
All right, that's fine. Normally it's been the parent.
Well, not really, no.
Where was, if you wouldn't mind, Mrs. Bakker?
It's on page two.
On page?
In the middle.
Anything else, Mrs. Beck?
Yes, and page seven on August 21st, there was a question that I had on, you have it on a child hearing, but my question was on the PACE program, so it has to be moved up one. The question, you have it underneath somebody for a child hearing, but the question was based on a parent's.
And really, it's always above the next one, so it would be agenda item number nine.
Because it looked like everything was moved down, because even there was one that's, because there was one that's on it too. Right, but you have me after number eight.
Right.
My question was on number seven. And I moved.
I'll make that change.
Thank you.
Anything else? If there's any other corrections, deletions, if I'd like to take motion to accept and file the minutes?
So.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, vote to accept and file the minutes.
Mr. Bautista.
Yes.
Mrs. Bakker.
Yes.
Mr. Bishada.
Yes.
Mr. Brzezinski.
Yes.
Mr. Sayak.
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto.
Yes.
Mr. Rakuya.
Yes.
Mr. Trapp.
Yes.
And Mrs. Bakker.
Yes.
Dr. O'Fana, your report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Bakker. Section A buildings and grounds, Middlesex County School Board Association will be having its meeting here on October 2012, we discussed it at the last meeting, that's just the approval. Number two should be omitted and withdrawn. And number two on section A should be withdrawn. Number three is another substandard room that needs to be approved. Any questions with section A? With none moving to finance, numbers one to 10 are our regular resolutions. Number 11 is the disposal of the following obsolete textbooks, of which many are encyclopedia-related, which of course were not, or books of knowledge that we're not using anymore. And that runs through page nine. Then the, and I want to thank Marilyn for doing a good job submitting what the No Child Left Behind, consolidated grant application, and once she finished it and worked through, like probably two, three o'clock in the morning, they came back the next day and gave an extension for another two weeks, which is atypical. I said, I wrote, I sent it to her and I said, I guess this will make you day now. But fortunately, it's done and it's publicly approved. There's a deletion from the guys in our PTO for playground equipment, page 10, building use schedule with fees. There are no increases in the fees from last year. Number 16 are educational services that deal with nursing services and speech services as listed. Number 17 is the establishment of a multi-disabled class and D-class itself. This is an additional class for increased enrollment. Kevin, sequestration? This is something that came from the federal government. Basically, what it's saying is, is that in not this school year, but next school year, the government is going to cut somewhere around close to eight percent of all the federal funding to try to make a balanced budget. Good luck. This is a resolution that basically says that we are not in support of any cuts due to the fact that it's going to have a major effect or an effect on our class sizes, et cetera. That's the resolution that came down from New Jersey School Board's. Any comments?
I have a question.
Sorry.
Mrs. Bakker.
Is there a reason why we didn't include Lambert? Just an index?
That would be a typo.
I thought maybe he was an educator.
There'll be intermission. There'll be intermission, correct. Yeah, we will include him as well if the board doesn't object. No, there was no reason he was.
So, add front.
Yes. Mrs. Green?
Under 14 for the, when we, when someone rents out the rooms, is that per day? What if someone wanted it for the weekend?
That would be charged each way.
Okay, just check, thank you.
Okay.
Any questions?
Number eight I'm going to have to stay on. And number 14 is, what, like, so it's out there, is there any, any? Should be more considered charging for use of parking lots when people have functions somewhere else in town. I walk by, I see cars parked in the grass, I see garbage in parking lots after some events in town.
It's up to the board, we can have a charge for use of parking lot.
It's not a bad idea if we have to pick up the trash.
Now, are you referring to like external organizations or like borough for service?
No, external organizations, like, there's either Pittsburgh Park or Car Show at Pittsburgh Park, or sometimes the temple uses some parking. I see a park over the grass at the middle school, I think, yeah. It doesn't have to be done today, but just in the future, it's just.
Maybe some of them should.
Maybe the Buildings and Grounds Committee can take a, take a look at that? If it's a revenue opportunity for us and it doesn't hurt us.
The issue that comes up is that there's several parking lots that are used by church organizations here in town. As an example, Our Lady of Victories, the parking lot behind, not behind the church, but in front of the church and down past several medical groups is the borough property. The parking lot across from St. Stan's Church is borough property. The church on, by Washington School uses the Washington School property, which is municipal property. You're going to, I think you're looking to set up a firestorm using public facilities and charging on them. I didn't know that.
Okay.
I think we got a ransom. Any questions with number B? Redebit. All right, personnel not certified, is there a paid medical leave there, a laxium upgrade, parent professional assignments, which are listed on pages 13, 14, 15, okay? And then moving to number 16 is a, an employment and a new substitute. Any questions with section C? With none moving to personnel served, there's a pregnancy leave, an employment of a reading specialist, an amendment to the date of someone who was on their leave, to push it to December 31st. A lapse in lateral transition is noted. The dean of discipline and the attendance officers are being mentioned and noted. Professional days, there's a few that are listed. Approvals, salary adjustments due to changes in credit and degree status. Some detention supervisors as listed. The many people that we've employed, just as a synopsis and a summary, I hired 55 new people over the summer, which over last year, I believe we hired about 40. So, we're 15 above, and we're only one shot. Somebody rescinded an offer, so we still have to fill one more special education. This is a substitute, a brand-new substitute for 2012-13. These, this is the nursing substitute list, and number 13 is a recurring or renewing of substitutes from the years past. And as you can see, we have on, you know, we're trying to coordinate and get this list more efficiently run. Right now, we have probably between 800 and 900 people in our files that are all types of substitutes that we're trying to weed a lot of individuals out who don't work. We probably have actively working, maybe 150 substitutes, and we have 800 people that we're processing. So, we're taking a close look and trying to streamline this process because it's becoming very cumbersome. And I only have one individual who works on this and works on it constantly. Any questions with section D?
So, is this complete then?
It's complete for that. You know, obviously movement, new people.
But this would include all the recurring people.
Right, right. The recurring people, what happens is if they send their notices back, we put them on the list. So, sometimes people don't send their letter back. What I, what we're trying to do now is if somebody hasn't worked in a certain period of time, whether it be a year or whatever, rather than consistently, you know what I'm saying, sending them a letter even though they haven't worked for five years, stop that. So that Lori doesn't have to process them, put the letter in the envelope, put the person's name in, and then they don't work. So, I, so we're trying, that's one of the first things that we're going to really try to streamline. You gotta, you gotta remember, we have substitutes for everything. Secretaries, parent professionals, teachers, and, you know, bus drivers, you name it, we have. So, we have about 900 people on file, we're going to try to cut down to about 200.
Can't you cap those?
Say, you know, you have, let's say, 50 active, whatever you have.
We do, we do.
Not take any new?
The problem, what happens, Mike, and I'll just tell you the principle, you think you have a whole bunch? Bang, December comes and we get a whole bunch of people absent, and people don't want to work, and people leave and get jobs, and before we know it, behind the eight ball. I'd rather have more subs than not enough because it makes it a little bit easier. And I know Sue, who does a great job, Kaprowski does a fantastic job, I don't even know how she does it for K-8, and Shirley does it for the high school. So, I know, because I was, you know, trying to get substitutes, and we do a good job here of filling slots. Any question with section D, any others?
I have one question, Dr. O'Fana. In where I've worked, that may be, it's something we can consider here, the right of refusal. Say, for example, you call a person three times in a row, and three times that person denies. How about we just put a star by that and don't call that person?
We could, believe Sue and I, when we used to work together, you know, we basically called back the people that are the most consistent, because the last thing you want to do, but sometimes you're, you know, some mornings you wake up and for whatever reason you have, I know I was in the middle school, I had 22 to 25 people out one day, just that one school. And subsequently, you had to shake the trees, just, just to get enough of people to substitute. Sometimes you're actually asking teachers to work on their prep or on their duty because you don't have enough subs. And we all know, if you're in education, you have good days and you have bad days. Beginning of the year, first couple of months, hopefully, we hold the fort, but as the year progresses, you need more and more subs. But that is, that is a good practice. There is no report for policies?
Mr. Bautista, have any questions?
Number 13, page 20, Cheryl Balcom, you have to stay on.
You got it. Moving to F, curriculum, there is no HIBR reports. The curriculum as it is stated there needs to be approved. Any questions with this section?
Question, or you, Dr. O'Fana?
Sure.
On curriculum, one of the things over the past several years, and I've asked the board and kind of pushed for it, is a curriculum that's not just Sereb, but county-wide. And we tried to work towards that and using the same textbooks as other districts use to, you know, get a curriculum that, again, you know, is county-wide instead of.
I, I think you're hitting the nail right on the head. With the new core standards, everything is moving towards a federal concept. The core standards are split into two groups now. One half of the country is using PAR, and the other half of the country is using, what's the other one?
Smarter Balance.
Smarter Balance. And we're with the PAR section, which basically is about 25 different states. And the core standards are going to be very close to what we have to follow, which is a broader concept than the actual curriculum that you see here. So, we do work with the county. I know Mr. Agulies sits down with many of the directors of curriculum and instruction in the county, and we try to do a lot of that so that we're not duplicating, as the concern would be, the same curriculum that we could certainly work with somebody else.
Well, the reason I bring that up, because, you know, there's always been a question within the district, Middlesex County, of certain individual schools having a better program. And what I'm trying to refer to is making a program that is standard throughout the county. If we could work towards that, I think it would be beneficial to all the students.
Well, with the new regional curriculum directors, they're moving to three regional offices, so maybe that might be something that they're going to start doing. I'm not 100% sure. You gotta remember, the State Department right now is in the middle of revamping the entire Department of Education, where we used to have county superintendents, will now be reduced to regional offices anywhere. I think there are seven of them now, and you're going to get three counties in each. And right now, our county superintendent is day-to-day. We're not even sure of who is going to be our county superintendent in the regional office. And the only people that are being rehired are the Department of Education or business administrators and the directors of special services, but the county superintendents are still on LUMBA. And the educational specialists are also on LUMBA. We haven't had an ed, we just received an educational specialist with, dealt with a lot of the curriculum, and I'm not really sure what's going to happen right now.
Dr. O'Fana, with the, following up on Mr. Bishada's comments, with the new federal standards, how do you see this shaking out in terms of a standard curriculum when you look at the diversity associated with different municipalities in the same county? For example, you look at a Sereb and a North Brunswick, and as Mr. Bishada indicated, I see huge synergies there for curriculum development. You look at a New Brunswick and an East Brunswick, now you're looking at two different demographics. What opportunities are there for that type of synergy? Are they the same? Would there still be a requirement that it be different and each district, you know, develop a unique curriculum based upon their particular community?
I, I think it's going to stay with the latter. I don't think there are ever going to come out what a uniform curriculum that everybody has to follow because of the uniqueness of all the districts. But I do think the standards, and this is what we're discussing, which is broader than the objectives, broader than the basic goals that are curriculum-related and more distinguished within each of the content areas. The standards themselves, the core standards, are going to be the same, which are broader. And they're much more, like mathematics had so many of them, language arts, and they really tried to consolidate them down so that they were more manageable. But that basically is what everybody's going to follow. And then from there, you create the curriculum, your individual curriculum, your district curriculum, all of that. And I know that Mr. Agulies, he is, is working on that with the teachers and with the supervisors, trying to write curriculum that's related to the core standards as well as still relate to the needs of our individual students.
As we get more, as we get more information and we get more samples from the state as to what they're looking for, I think more districts are looking to work together just to not reinvent the wheel, so to speak. But I think you're going to get more, more directors working together, more districts working together. But in a county like Middlesex County, to get them all working on the same page, it's going to be very difficult. It's not impossible, but it's going to be much more difficult. I think smaller districts are going to work with larger districts to take advantage of some of the resources larger districts will have and vice versa. So, it's an interesting time for development right now.
Now, I'll go one step further as a follow-up to that based on what you just said. Is there for a district like Sereb, the potential for a revenue opportunity for sharing our expertise in some of these areas? And it may not be an answer you have right now, it just may be something you want to think about. Is there an opportunity for us to share our knowledge, our expertise, and bring some funding into the district to help our programs?
Kevin, when I was in Hudson County, we did something like that. It's not that we made money, it's that we reduced the amount of professional development causes because we consolidated a lot of the speakers, a lot of the curriculum that had to be written, and we wrote it, like you're saying, based on accounting analysis, so that we pooled our resources. We didn't really make money, but it didn't cost as much as if we did it ourselves.
There are some districts that, for example, Pearson has bought their curriculum, off the top of my head. Nothing in New Jersey comes to mind, but Washington State had a couple of curriculum bought for K-3, I believe, last year when it first started switching over, and they're not in the park system. So, there are opportunities, there's nothing really advertised right now, but let's see what the future holds.
I would encourage us to seek those out.
Moving on to section G, co-curriculums, weight training, ladies and gentlemen, boot camp, that's for everybody. So, at Isabel, I would want him, I don't know, I think he'd beat me to death, so I'll leave it at that. There's a tricky tray at Arlen, as listed, family movie night. There's a Sereb Day with the choir that we're approving today. Just received that request, which I thought that was a good thing to approve. Any questions with section G?
Mr. Ted, the tricky tray, is Arlen posting it or is it a PTO function? Is this school posting the tricky tray?
I believe it's all, right?
It's Arlen PTO.
It's all PTO.
It's a PTO.
Okay, I'll add that word. I'll delete the school. Thank you. Okay, moving to H, these are weight transportation and joint transportation routes and contracts. Before I close, Mr. Bakker, I would like to make one comment. I know there was some concern about schedules that went out in the elementary schools that were not uniform. Mr. Agulies and I will assure you that that will not happen again. I sent out a memo immediately today as soon as I received a few parental concerns, and I did speak with certain principals in regard to that on a K-3 level, and I made very sure, and I can guarantee you, that next year, the schedules will go out uniformly. My, the person who did that usually worked through all that, retired, and we have some new principals, so there is some anomalies because of the fact that we have new people. That's not an excuse, it's unfortunately a fact that I will deal with next year. We can't fix it for this year, but certainly the memo on now, I got responses from most of the principals ready, so they, so this doesn't happen again next year. So, rather than, rather than, nevermind the problem.
If somebody calls a school tomorrow with information that will be released, yes, sir?
Absolutely should be released. Matter of fact, I believe the one school that was in question sent out a, it's not parent link anymore.
Yeah, they got Blackboard Connect.
Sent out a parent, what is it called?
Blackboard.
Blackboard Connect message that basically said exactly what we're talking about today, that the schedules are available and.
Can we look into next year and using Power School for K through eight for this?
Oh, it's a great, not only K through eight, I think that brings up a fantastic point, that if we have the capabilities of parents being able to go on the.
Yeah, high school.
Yeah, the, for lack of a better word, the portal of the, what do you call it, the parent portal. I, I certainly think that it's very capable of just saying to a parent, sending out a parent link.
Your schedule's.
Your schedule's available, you know, go on, take a look at it. Do you have any questions? Please call.
I don't have kids in school anymore, so I haven't had the advantage of using that. So, isn't there a button on there that says get schedule or?
I believe there is a button that says get schedule.
But I think we have to enact that, we have to enable that. So, we have to take a look at that, and I think that's a great suggestion. And I'm all for.
Well, that's a dead answer.
No paper, no, no mailing, no, no costs.
No parents hunting them down.
No parents hunting down anything.
Or going to the school.
Or going to the school and not sure. Obviously, you're still going to get questions about the schedule, and it would make it a lot easier, and it would make it a lot quicker. I, I will look into that, I don't, I, I would think you can do it, and I think it would be something that I would seriously look into, and I think it's very efficient, why not?
The technology priority to make that available, because, you know, in education, we're a service industry, and we need to provide that service, and if we have the infrastructure of whatever it takes to program that ability, I think it's an imperative to do so.
Well, we'll research that, and I'll get back to you. You know, I think that would be fantastic, because that may, I know when I was running off 1,800 schedules for the middle school, all I had to do was hit a button group and make an announcement that would make my life 10 times easier.
Eventually, I don't, I'm not believe the system we have here, but eventually, report cards will be accessed via that system as well. So, you don't have to send out paper or report cards, it's just posted, and you have access, secure access.
The goal is obviously to be, everything to be electronic.
But are we doing the progress reports electronically?
Progress reports.
I remember we had talked about that. No?
I don't believe we're doing progress reports electronically.
We still have the, we still have the paper copies, but you can access your student grades.
Are progress reports accessible?
Currently, I don't believe so. But one of the things I was going to discuss with the schedule is, even if you send it out electronically to principals, we'd still have to make them all live at the same time, because if I'm working on, let's say Eisenhower's schedule, I may not have it ready as quickly as Mrs. Davis will have it at Wilson School. So, you're still going to have to have them all uploaded and coordinate when they'll become visible online. So, whether it's paper or online, there's still coordination between the buildings that Dr. O'Fana.
How far are we from having all the modules in our school activated? And there's still some modules that you don't have configured yet or are activated? Or is it we using 100% capability of the system?
I don't think, I don't think we're using 100% of the capability, but I would say, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're using about 80% of it, I would say. And as we learn a little bit more about it, like his work, for example, we're not really using the schedule. So, that's something that we have to look down the line. Progress reports, that might be something that you want to look down the line. So, those are things that we have not done. I remember when we had the budget program, it took a minute, and it's still a personnel package, we're only using about 85, 90% of the program, so it's all because it's so powerful. But yes, the more, and I think we're learning more and more about it. And I think somebody, like, for example, we just hired Eric Lockman Lloyd for the high school. I really believe that that, you know, and Rich Kowhusky and the rest of the guys at the high school will really start to push hard to try to get that capacity up to 95, 100%, as well as the middle school. I know Don is very into the scheduler and all the other stuff, Don is moving. So, yeah, if we can make our lives easier, why not?
Well, if the next curriculum meeting or technology meeting, you can just give me an update on what modules are yet to be activated on our school.
I have a note on that, sir.
And is there a cost concern, or do we pay the full amount of it, and now we just have to figure out how to use it? Or is there a cost to add additional modules?
Yeah, some of the modules, we might have to pay for it.
Who's, I know we put out a new job description at the last meeting.
We haven't gotten anybody yet.
Oh, so right now, is Emgotten only doing it and?
No one is.
No one's doing it?
No one's really doing it right now. Posting closes, I think, on Friday.
Yes, this Friday.
This Friday, the 7th. So, we're going to wait and see.
So, if people have issues, where do they go in the meantime?
Well, each.
They, well, each building has someone who works, you know, has a little bit, has some knowledge about Power School, and Karen W. and Mike are also involved.
I tried logging on this weekend, and there was an open saying, try back on December 12th or something like that.
Right. The portal is not open, and we did not plan to have it open until at least next week, because there's really nothing on there at this point.
But if we went live, like, let's say, the Friday before Labor Day weekend, everybody could log on that Friday, that would be our date, and we wouldn't even have to do the phone call, that would just be our...
Right.
Well, the only reason you have to do the phone call is to let everybody know that it's up and running. You're right, you could go in and say, you know, as soon as you...
Like, we know on Friday before Labor Day that if you go to the elementary school, and you find your kid's name, and you know what their teacher is. Like, we just know that, so people would, or at the end of the year.
I think we know, go home with the last report card of the year.
Right, come at the end of the year.
I mean, it's very easy to set up what the Blackboard Connect or the parent link to make one, to make a phone call.
Honestly, Helen, we want to use Blackboard Connect in the beginning of the year, God forbid it doesn't work. If we have an issue, you never know, you get a major storm, you don't have school, and the Blackboard Connect needs to be working immediately. So I always tell the principal, as soon as you can use that, use it, get used to it. I know some of the, some of the parents...
Some of them, some of them...
Some of them have already used it.
Mrs. Jacob has used it, I know Miss Moore has used it already.
And it's great, because this way, we know it works. See, that's my concern, is God forbid something happens and you haven't used it yet. Sometimes you wait too long, and then, and then all of a sudden, you find you have a problem.
So right now, there's no data, the data's not on the parent portal right now?
No, there's no data on the sample portal.
So I have a question. So if any parent that has not received this schedule with a child's teacher in elementary, including the UES, they can contact that school tomorrow? That, the office tomorrow?
I would, yes, I would think that everything is already uploaded, unless there's a problem with that schedule or with that class. Sometimes I don't have, like, I know when I was doing schedules, sometimes right to the last day, there was a problem. But the schedule should be done. I mean, it's the day before school.
Not speaking for the other schools, but from experience at the UES, if a student shows up and either doesn't know the teacher's name, doesn't have their schedule, there's a master list at the, at Samson where that child's name is there, and there are teachers who are assigned that duty. So if a student comes in, they're not wearing a ticket, they're brand new, take it off, name tag. They're brand new, they don't know where to go, they moved and they didn't get the schedule. Those, they're directed to those teachers, those two teachers have a copy of every student's schedule, and they give that student the schedule, and they have somebody else walk into where that teacher is waiting for all their students. So there is a process so that if a student gets there, at least at the, at the larger school, if a student gets there and they're not certain where they go, who their teacher is, there are a couple of fail safes in place for them at that school.
Okay. You were closing out.
I conclude my report.
Okay, any questions or comments in the board, we'll open up the public on the agenda, items only. Seeing none at this time, in the public, any questions or comments on agenda items only, please come up, state your name and address on the record. I will open up again for any business to come before this floor. Seeing none, I will close the public portion for agenda items only, and solicit a motion to file and accept the superintendent's report.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Can I please get a roll call though?
Mr. McEnam.
Yes, if the section is noted.
Mr. McEnam.
Yes.
Mr. Bishala.
Yes.
Mr. Brzezinski.
Yes.
Mr. Sye.
Yes.
Mr. DePinto.
Yes.
Mr. Akuya.
Yes.
Mrs. Strad.
Yes.
And Mr. McEnam.
Yes. Delegate to New Jersey School Board Association.
The really only component of my report was the sequestration resolution, which the board already approved, so.
Wonderful, wonderful piece.
Thank you.
Committee reports. I don't think any committees met since the last board meeting.
Okay, but we do have, the committee has a meeting next Monday. It's in the media center, right, here at the high school. So it's at 6:30, so always welcome. I'm going to say yes, but I haven't checked. It should be. The committee, yes, I just haven't checked.
The policy committee also met, and is in need of direction. I don't know if I can take that now or a discussion.
Well, discussion is next.
It's up to you.
Okay. Mr. McEnam? Yes, before we go into the discussion, Mr. Dandridge, could you give a summation of what progress we made this year on capital projects?
The major projects that were undertaken were the middle school patio, which is complete, the middle school roof, which as of today, well, I shouldn't say today, as of Friday, they made it about halfway through one side of the D wing. They still have the remaining part of the D wing. The unfortunate part is the weather is going to hold them up now. It looks like they'll be working on weekends. Those were the two major projects. We're currently still working in Solover School with the univentilator upgrades on the business side, business side, the business office side of the building, and other than that, those are really the major ones. All other, all of the others are smaller projects.
Are the univentilators completed in the D wing of the middle school?
Oh, thank you. Yes, they are completed. I believe they have bunch list items. As far as I know, they have completed what they needed to do.
Thank you.
Can I follow up on that? And the baseball field, everything seems to be working fine with the baseball field? I haven't heard anything.
I have not heard anything, so I'm assuming things are fine.
And hopefully, field hockey is just as good?
Again, no one said anything, so I'm assuming things are fine.
If I'm correct, Mr. Dandridge, the sprinkler system went into our softball field, am I correct on that?
Yeah, that was several months ago.
So that...
So is the only project still pending, is the roof, everything else is complete?
As far as, well, the Solover School's not complete yet.
Okay. Mrs. Sye, the policy committee was tasked with coming up with a policy, and you've reached a roadblock, I think.
Well, you've reached a roadblock, but I think you have a recommendation to solve that roadblock.
I do, I do.
So I'll go through and give some background to the public. The board has already received a memo on this. If you recall, the policy committee was tasked with coming up with a policy regarding national competitions for students. And we did write one, and basically what we did is we codified our existing past practice, which is, we will send students who initially qualify outright for a competition for FBLA, DECA, and Odyssey of the Mind, and as well as the Geography and Spelling bees, because those were the competitions that we sent to in the past. And as, after we finished the policy, the committee looked at it, and we were concerned about the equity message it was sending, because although we were sufficiently codifying our past practice, there was nothing in there about athletics, or cheerleading, or any of the other organizations which may be competing. So we brought the topic to the board in the form of a memo, and wanted some discussion tonight about, how do we really, from a high level, want to go forward with this? Is this something where we truly want to continue to fund national competitions for students, or do we want to say, no more, and if you win a national competition, congratulations, we'll provide transportation to the airport, but in terms of any cost beyond that, it's the responsibility of the team or the individual pupil to fundraise for it? Or do we want to go to the other far end and say, look, anyone who initially qualifies outright, whether it be the football team, the cheerleaders, FBLA, OM, DECA, if you win a national competition, we will pay all costs and send you. And we were concerned about the latter provision, because obviously, for example, send the OM team to a national competition for 14 students, it costs the board $25,000. If you multiply that out, times several different athletic organizations, all of a sudden, that cost really begins to add up, and can very easily be a couple hundred thousand dollars. Likewise, we were concerned about just saying, no, we're not going to do it anymore, because we've had several organizations, one of whom we just honored here at a board meeting two months ago, which have been achieving, you know, very well at the national level, have really not been a part of the initial issue that came before the board, and we didn't want to necessarily recommend that we penalize them as a result of just trying to clean up our policy. So the committee gave the board in the form of a memo a broad range of recommendations, ranging from nothing to everything. And we're going to have some board discussion here today. Before we have that board discussion, I would just like to share one additional option that Mr. McEnam brought to my attention for the board's consideration, which I think has a very good possibility. What he suggested is that each team or club that desires to compete, declare an affiliated organization. For example, sports would perhaps be the NJSIAA. Cheerleading could pick their organization. The band could pick USSBA, Tournament of Bands, TOB, et cetera. They would declare an organization at the beginning of the year, and then if they were successfully qualifying outright for a national competition, as a result of winning that organization's state competition, the board would fund it, subject to appropriation in the budgetary process. So obviously, if we hit a major budgetary crisis through sequestration or some other major catastrophe, we could always cut that line item out completely. As long as there's money budgeted for these types of trips, and the team or club met that particular, those particular criteria, the board would then fund them. So I'll use that recommendation as a jumping off point for board discussion, but certainly any of the other options that I indicated in the memo, or any other options that any other board members may have, are certainly, you know, worth discussion as well.
Fund any, I don't. I never considered not funding anything. I mean, we spend a lot of money in other areas. I think this is something that's money well spent, as long as that we're, have a consistent policy governing. So does anybody, before we start any discussion, have the option, don't want to fund any?
Well, I absolutely want to fund whatever's in New Jersey.
I'm asking nationally. Does anybody in the board not want to fund nationally and just say, we don't fund anything? That's certainly equitable. But then, what we do is, we eliminate those teams who we funded for many years, and say, now you have to do it yourself. Now, what did we spend on ONM the last trip?
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand. Now, it's a lot of money to fund.
For 14 students.
It's a lot of candy to sell, so. All right, so we're at that point, and no one's considering not funding anything. So then, what I had suggested, in the interest of equitability, is that, you know, I know we have competitive cheerleading squad now. If they win some, I don't know what they fall under, but if they win a jersey title, and then they want to compete in Pasadena, California for a national thing, how do we sell them no when we sent that? Or I wouldn't be sent these people there. I don't want to discourage success, and I think there's something to be said, as people had mentioned, about having a favorable representative at the national level. Now, what are the chances of our football team, and wrestling team, and all these teams within the same year going to a national competition? Is there anything that sponsors them? That's why I thought that was key. What is your governing body? And is that a sanctioned event, and not just say, like, the wrestling team wants to go compete for fun with Beast of the East in Pennsylvania? That's a different story. This is something that's sanctioned, and then you earned it, and then we won it. So that's, I think, where we should stop for discussion. Okay, hearing nothing?
Why we came up to this roadblock was, do we spend, how much do we spend on athletics? How much do we spend on academics? And how do we, how are we equitable with all of that? We don't know how far our sports teams can go nationally, but knowing that we have a fabulous baseball team, we have some talented swimmers and gymnasts, could they, would they know ahead of time to be able to declare themselves? Or are we knocking them out?
Is there a national football comp, I mean, are there national competitions for those things?
Our state level does come under a national, there is a national...
There is a national, and I actually, I wrote it down here. It's the National Federation of High Schools, of which the New Jersey State Interscholastic Athletic Association is a member. But according to JK, NJSIAA does not permit any of its members to participate in a national event through the NFHS.
About that, then.
Now, certainly, I mean, if they want to declare themselves with another organization, you know, obviously through the executive, through the athletic director, through the superintendent, they would have the opportunity to win and to pursue a national event.
Let me correct you, we have to make that.
Correct, correct.
And tell them not to make that call. Okay, so it's not a big issue for sports.
But keep in mind, cheerleading is not under the guise of NJSIAA. And my understanding with cheerleading is, they are, they have currently participated in national competitions, but they are not part of any national organization right now. They kind of pick individual tournaments that they want to go to.
Well, that's different. The policy wouldn't cover that.
The policy wouldn't cover it, and up until this point, we have never funded cheerleading for their national event. They've always fundraised for it on their own.
But they never, they never had a competitive team.
They've never had a competitive team.
For recent.
Well, until recently, but they also never belonged to one organization and one state title. They kind of bounce around and select different organizations. Now, under the policy provision that you just made, should the cheerleading team say, I want to be part of this organization, start at a regional competition, be successful, move to a state competition and be successful, and then go to national, we would fund their trip to national, just as we would FBLA, OM, or the UES?
Yes, yes, as long as they make that declaration.
And they win their state competition, and they qualify outright initially for it.
Yes. Does anybody have any issue?
Yeah, I'm not thrilled with that.
What?
Well, because it is expensive, and I'm thinking about OM, and yeah, we spent $25,000, but throughout the school year, we spend, I'm going to say 7,000, well, maybe like $10,000 between the two advisors, the high school and the middle school, and the kids basically don't spend any money during the year that we pay for. So that $25,000 is probably equal to what football, we're paying for football right there. And my nieces went to Disney in their cheer competition, and those parents, and this is out in North Hunterdon, the parents paid for that. And, and North Hunterdon's a much richer school district than we are. And I, I like the idea of, because, because we just don't have a pocketful of money, we can't say yes to every event.
So you're saying that parents should pay for OM, too?
So, well, it would have to be, it would have to be that way.
Because it has to be all or not.
Right, absolutely.
We can't say we're going to pay for academics and not sports. I don't agree with paying for some or not.
So then you're advocating not paying for any?
I'm advocating maybe paying 50%. Maybe we could do something like that, where now we know that the, the parents and the students have, have to buy into this as well.
I don't think this is something where every year, every one of our competition entities are going to go to that.
No, right, and I wonder, hasn't gone in a couple of years, and some of them still go to Maryland, which is a lot less expensive than, you know, Iowa. But...
I just think it's money well spent.
I, I agree with Mr. McEnam that it is money well spent. Our, our students, whether it be academic or sport, work hard at whatever they do, whether it be OM, FBLA, or DECA, or cheerleading, or football. They put their heart and soul into whatever they do, and if we're going to spend money on things, I'd rather see it spent here. If fiscally possible, yes, if there's a budget here where we can, we pull it out, but there's nothing to be here. I don't foresee that every organization is going to make nationals, and I'd rather see the money go to the children and celebrate, you know, their success.
How about this side? Nothing heard. Mrs. McEnam, you certainly must want to say something.
Yeah. I guess, I knew this came out of the whole ordeal with the FBLA, and that OM was $25,000, but I guess I must have missed that we were only going to focus on those particular areas. Because if we're going to start making a policy for equity, I mean, we saw, I see things all the time on the agenda, TIGs trips, SAD trips, all Great Adventure trips. I mean, if we're going to start looking at what we're going to spend money and what we're not, I think we need to be fair across the board, and we need to distinguish between an academic class versus a club, and who, who pays and who doesn't, which is, like, I saw that, you know, which is how it grew up. I saw we were paying for SAD transportation, but not FBLA transportation. So if we're going to make a policy, I think we need to do it extracurricular across the board, if we're going to just do this, but we're only focusing, and I also thought one of the other issues was the way you get to go. It wasn't even just about money. I thought this policy was going to address that.
That's the initially qualify outright.
Right. And that's the first, second, or third words.
Right, but see, no, because see, that...
Right.
Right. But if you look at that, and that's, I always had an equity problem with that. If you, sometimes if you're in Odyssey of the Mind, and you could qualify for nationals, you can be competing, and you could be number two out of three teams, or you could be an FBLA student who is number four, third place dropped out, moved up to third place, and they won it out of 2,000. So I don't, see, that outright, I'm going to have a problem with.
This is why most districts don't pay for it, because it's so much easier.
It is easier.
We're very desperate.
But I don't necessarily think that's better.
Well, how do you, how do you suggest that, you know, and I'm, I'm okay with that, but how do you suggest we do that to cover every possible conceivable scenario that could come to the board, with as many, and I think it was something like 70-some odd percent of our kids are involved in some type of extracurricular activity. I mean, it's big here in the district.
And we see the issues with the trips as well, the non-adjudicated events, but we just see them as a separate, we're not saying we don't want to address them, we're just saying we see that as a separate policy, separate category, where we kind of have to take them as a group, because they're not competitive events.
Right, but I, but they may not be competitive, but here, we're saying no to competitive, and I continually see those extracurricular trips on the agenda that we pay for. So if we're going to start turning around and say, no, I'm not going to pay for cheerleading and pay for OM, then I need to know that that's going to get addressed as well, because if I'm not going to pay for OM, I don't want to pay for ZAD trip.
Yeah, but see, but look, but when FBLA has their conferences and do their trips, we pay for that, too. We were just so focusing just on national competition.
So that's all the policy was going to address, was a national competition?
Initially, yes. Now, we, we talked about the need of also addressing this from a trip perspective as well. But again, we feel the two are, they're two completely different animals. I don't, I don't know how you compare a... animals. I don't, I don't know how you compare a, you know, a history club trip to Washington D.C. versus a competitive event for cheerleaders. I, I don't see the two being in the same category.
They may not be comparable, but if I'm going to put a policy in and say someone decides, "Well, twenty-five thousand is too much," I need to look at it cohesively. I can't sit here and say, "No, I'm not going to pay for Odyssey of the Mind," but I'm not going to address all those other trips at the same time. Because I want to know, if we're going to start cutting funding, that we're going to do it equitable. And, and that the trips, I think, have to be accounted for in this as well.
One of my concerns with that also is the contests, the competitions that we're not aware of. If we did participate in a science fair, and if we had students that could go further, how do they know that in the beginning of the year? If someone participates in an art contest, and there could be a national competition with that, and I think that we need to be broad enough, broad enough to address it. I kind of like the idea of starting with the trip policy and narrowing it down, but we also don't want to start the year off not having a policy about this. So that's why we said we want direction, more direction from the board, because we know that this is important to start the year with.
And we haven't even mentioned band comp.
And we've been, right, and there are so many other contests and competitions.
Band is covered by this. That's covered by, we've discussed that with Mr. Gentile.
That our students are involved with, that we don't want to leave out.
What do you mean in their policy?
If, if they declare a particular organization, U S S B A., Tournament of Bands, whatever, and they win a state title, and are eligible outright to compete nationally, we will fund them to compete.
And that's a little different funding.
And have we, haven't we funded them?
We have not in the most recent years. We may have years ago, but we have not in the last couple of years. And I don't know if it's because they haven't qualified, or they just have a desire to go.
See, that's a big issue.
So the band parents always fund you?
I don't think they've gone.
Oh, you don't think they've gone out of state, right?
But see, they're, they're in line with the issue that we need to be concerned about. It's different sending two F B L A. kids and an advisor to San Antonio versus sending the band and all the equipment on airplanes to someplace. We're talking about a cost thing now, that's really...
But how do we say no to O M. group?
That's why, that's why act a policy committee to sit down and recommend.
We have met at least four times.
For two to three hours a shot.
And, and going over this, and over this, and every time we think we come up with something, it's, "Wait a minute, but what about Spelling Bee? Well, what about an art contest? What about, we want to be comprehensive and fair to everyone." And I think that's where Mrs. Strapp was coming up with the, maybe we shouldn't be doing any of it.
And, and keep in mind, I mean, yes, we, we want a policy that certainly is going to stand the test of time, i.e. we don't want to have a controversy in November. But we're also not, I mean, we're, we're not writing gospel here. If we do this for a year or two, and we find out it's not working, it's too much money, it's too restrictive, we always amend the policy.
What policy did we have last year? When last year's school district started, uh, school year started, what policy did we have? We did not have policy.
Pass, correct.
And what problems, what problems did we encounter not having policy?
We haven't had any problems up until the last, the last time when an individual did not initially qualify outright.
Well, I don't see that to be a problem. I was just disagreeing.
And that's fine. Look, the board.
No, but we, every year we have, I mean, the previous year, we had D E C., we had Odyssey of the Mind before that. There is always an issue that comes up.
But we always use that past practice concept, where it'd be placed for a second and third we funded. That was always in place, and that should be incorporated into policy.
And the board could choose to do nothing and just let this ride, and use its discretion as these situations arise, as we have over the last ten years. That's also a possibility.
Yeah, I, I like that idea. I, and I like the, I still like the idea of the, of the board funding fifty percent of it, as well as, you know, the, the second or the cost for the advisor to go. And then the parents funding fifty percent of it. And I do feel that we should pay for everything in the state, and then anything, I, yeah, somebody had suggested anything more than seventy-five miles, that, that we would not pick up the full.
Well, there are different hybrids that we can use, that kind of takes us off the hook. If we said that for everybody, we will fund transportation to an airport, and we will fund registration fees, and we will fund the full ride for the advisor. Okay? You can do that, and then everybody else has to raise money for kids. Or you can come up, what I suggested with Kevin, another option is that everything's capped. You have a ten thousand dollar cap. Anything that's going to cost more than that, you have to figure that out coming.
But is that, like, per group? When you put a cap, it's like, same grade.
Yeah, which would be great. If F B L A. they'll never reach that cap, but the band will say, "Well, I can't do anything."
Right, and then Odyssey of the Mind can't do it either. So then that's not a fair cap either.
That's right. That's why I, we dismissed that. Well, it's just the thought process that we're through. Now, what policy can we come up with that is cogent, that everybody understands, there's not going to be open up interpretation, that covers every possible conceivable scenario? I don't think that's possible.
Or ninety percent of them anyway.
No, it's just that when I had gotten the memo, it was very specific. It was F B L A., Odyssey of the Mind, D E C., Spelling Bee. I didn't realize that was our focus. I felt we were focusing a, something broader.
We are.
Where we start it now.
We are, and I guess, we, the committee did.
Trying to.
The intent of the, the policy that we're writing is to focus on adjudicated competitive events. Now, like I said, I agree with you on the trip issue. That's also got to be addressed. But like I said, I see that as a separate policy. I understand your concern that you want to see both kind of side by sides, figure out how we allocate the funding. If you want to give us that direction, that's fine. All I would say is, given the amount of time we focused on just the trip policy, don't expect to have that back next week.
No, I guess I just look at it, if we have someone who wins a national competition, be it from one of these organizations, and you're going to turn around and say, "Oh, I want you to fundraise," but on the other hand, I'm going to approve a trip to Great Adventure, that's where I have a problem.
Correct.
So where I'd much rather see the funds go, even though it's an individual to represent our school academically nationally, than send a group of kids to Great Adventure. That's why, if I have to address one, I thought it was going to be, we were adjusting the funding as a whole.
I, I see your point.
And, and frankly, I think the trips have been much more controversial than these four organizations since I've been here, have been a bigger issue. But I was the one that disagreed. I don't see any problem with someone winning a competition, fourth place, third place drops out, and they get to go. I don't have a problem with that. You know, you had thousands of people compete. I, I don't look down upon that. So, but I didn't have a problem sending them. That's how the problem started. But the person was allowed to go. That's why here, you're having a policy, and that was past practice.
Well, the person went, but we didn't fund it.
Right, but the person went. But that was, see, that was not past practice. So we were arguing over the funding.
Well, we didn't have that scenario with that situation. I mean, that's, that's the problem we had.
Yes, we did.
Well, yeah, well, that's...
Well, I have a question. When we did the D E C., that was not a competition. That was an exhibition. So would that be covered under this, the year before?
Okay, I, I think what we're doing now is...
And this is what goes on for hours on end at our policy meeting.
To answer your question, no, that would not be covered by this policy, although I wasn't aware that was an exhibition. I thought that was, was a competition. But to answer your question, if it's an exhibition, it's not covered under this policy.
Somebody would have sent that.
Well, unless we approve it as a trip.
Well, we approved it, but we didn't pay for it.
Unless we approve it as a trip.
We approved it.
We didn't pay for it.
Look, the committee just needs direction on what the board would like from a high level. And I know it's not easy, because like, like Mrs. Rakuya said, you know, we've gone twelve hours at this, and we're still, that's why we was the Macanote suggestion. I thought it was the best thing we heard so far.
Well, when you sent that memo, you, those were the four that you addressed. Is that the only four national competitive academic organizations?
We addressed those four, because those are the ones that have gone in the past, and we're not looking to penalize them. But the policy that we're writing will cover any competitive, any interscholastic competitive event. So if the football team wants to compete nationally, the policy would apply. If cheerleading wants to do it, the policy would apply.
Right, but that's where you get to the money problem. If you're going to spend a hundred, if you want to send a hundred kids.
But we can't just write a policy that says, if, like, for example, if you initially qualify outright, you will go. Nor can we write a policy that says, "If you place, we, you will go." Because someone could place in a state competition, and we'll be sending everybody.
Right. I would like to hear what the public has to say, because I see, you know, I know that people are getting, it bothers me that people are getting a little bit aggravated out there, because we're trying to come up with the best answer. So I'm all open for suggestions. I would like to hear what the public has to say.
We'll, we'll get to that point. We're not going to make any decisions.
Did you, did the policy committee go to, like, the high school staff? I know a lot of this is going to come out of high school and probably middle school stuff. Did they go, like, to the administrators, or like, what type of functions?
Yes.
And do you feel that you have, like, a cohesive list of what the cost could entail?
Oh, what the cost could entail?
Well, if, how many groups did you have that would fall under this? Were these the only four that you sent in your memo?
Although we thought of some more, like the Spelling Bee and the Geography Bee.
Geography Bee, the marching band.
If there was a science fair, if there was an art contest. We don't know, you know, all of, all of the, the different organizations that people might compete with.
Well, let me, let me suggest.
What happens if we have a golfer or a wrestler who all of a sudden manages to have a shot to compete nationally?
Tennis.
Tennis.
Can.
Swimming.
That was...
Can, N J., New Jersey's Athletic, whatever it is, down in Robbinsville.
Well, that's...
Put the Goboshes on that real quick.
Well, that's through their organization. Can they go through a third-party organization?
Well, we, we pick the organization.
Under, under this power, yes.
We pick the organization. Let me just suggest that, we need to look at two separate things. We need to look at the competition team, which Mrs. Backo said, which is, well taken, the trips. And I think the trips is easy. The trips, it has to be related to curriculum. You know, if you can send, you know, a tag team, or if, if it's the Great Adventure trip that's tied to the physics day there, and that needs to be your judgment as a superintendent, this is a curriculum-based trip for the supervisor. If it's not, it shouldn't be coming to the general.
Well, we, we had a long discussion about trips. So, we're going to take a much harder look at which trips are going where, and whether or not they're part of the core curriculum.
I think our bigger concern right now is the policy for the competition.
Right, but I guess, I, I know this is difficult. Don't get me wrong, but, you know, we had two Odyssey of the Mind teams that went. If we had a football team that went, and a cheerleading team, would we prepare the budget? There's no way on earth we would ever budget of, of that type of...
You budget a mountain, and then that went out of mountain, is done. It's like first come, first served.
Like, so when you do a policy, there is going to have to be, when do you...
Split it up then, for, for sports.
Well, that's, but that's, but that's what I said to Kevin. I said to Kevin, "We've been relatively lucky the last two years, because we've passed the budget two years in a row." I'm shutting down purchase orders five years ago in February. I mean, obviously, you know, a fifty thousand dollar nut, or a forty thousand dollar nut to send people to a national convention, we may not be able to afford. I think you're opening up Pandora's box. Guys, where I came from, they eliminated freshman sports. There's pay to play. I think you really got to, you got to take a look at what we're talking about here. This is fifty thousand dollars for national conventions, for national competitions. And now we're opening up Pandora's box when we're talking about cheerleading, and we're talking about golf, and band, and, you know, I, you know, I want to do it, too. You're talking about one or two percent of the population versus when I got to cut something, talking about a teacher. Fifty thousand dollars is a teacher. There's sequestration, or whatever the hell you call that thing.
Sequestration.
Sequestration, whatever. You're talking about eighty, you're talking about another eighty thousand dollars. If the federal government goes that way, guess why? Our illustrious governor is going to go that way. We're already behind the people with this budget, because we're probably not going to secure as much as we need to fund the tw, the thirteen, fourteen budget. I, I, I think you have to make, you know, get a policy, bring it forward, and be done with it.
When we polled the other Middlesex County districts...
Or leave it the way it is, and we'll just sort of do what we've been doing, wing it.
Well, when we, when we polled the other Middlesex County districts when we were talking about the F B L A. issue, the majority of them didn't pay for anything.
The majority of them paid something, but not a lot.
Well, they paid the transportation fee.
Right.
They paid for the transportation for the kids.
Right. A lot of them paid transportation, a lot of them paid the registration thing, you know, but they didn't, they didn't pay the twenty, thirty, fifty thousand dollars, you know? I mean, this was an unusual year last year. I, I believe the year before it wasn't as great. We could get years where we don't get anybody qualified. We could get years where, you know, O M. is not going, maybe three or four kids. You know?
My concern is, too, if you start putting a financial industry, what happens to the competition that's in the fall versus the one that's in the spring and the fall?
Right.
So what's your, what's your recommendation?
We need ideas.
Yeah, I mean, we...
We need input from the rest of the board.
We, the, the committee has plenty of concerns. We need some recommendations.
I get you.
I, I, and I thought your recommendation works. I, I would support that.
I think what we can do, Kevin, we'll, we'll be here till doomsday with this. I think what we need to do is give, have any board member who wants to write in a suggestion to the board committee, meaning you, let them think about exactly what it is they want to do, send it to you, compile all the information, and in all due respect, make a decision. And I got a feeling this is what's going to happen. We, we're not going to make, we're not going to make a policy on this, because it's too hard. It really is. It's, it's like going to the Constitution and trying to make another amendment.
And you know, that, sometimes it's best not to have a policy. You leave it to the administrative...
And I've got, and you know what? I was the guy pushing it, and in all due respect, I think we're creating more of a bubble than, than we need to. And I think that's something that maybe the rest of the board might give a suggestion and say, "Just leave it." But I think pounding this out now, you're never going to come to a resolution. It's not that we're going to discuss it. I just think that, you know, maybe by the end of next week, drop off a suggestion, or the end of this week, if any board member has an issue, or wants to write something, bring it to the committee level. The committee at level takes a look at it. And this way you can be specific. I mean, right now, we're kind of, oh, you know, I hear some people, "Let's do fifty percent. Let's do," you know, some don't want to do any. And I think people are a little embarrassed, too, maybe to say what, you know, if they say zero, you know, I, I think there's people that really want, some people may not want to fund anything. But you're, in this environment, it's difficult to say that.
I mean, I'd love to fund everything.
Me, too. And I would, too. But I'm concerned about, you know, that this is going to snowball. I remember five years ago, you know, the wrestlers wanted to go to Florida. And, and, you know, I realize what you're saying. I get it. I understand that.
Listen, maybe not having a policy in one of those, because I don't want to have the day that we have a kid that's done real well in the Spelling Bee or an academic competition, and we're going to deny the funding to go. You know, we could look at it at that point and say, "Yeah, we're going to fund it." You know, how do we, how do we deny funding for a kid that's won a Spelling Bee, the state level wants to go nationally?
But you don't have the money.
I, I think we have more inequity issues with the, the trips and the clubs and things like that than we do with the competition. I, I don't know that, I mean, we've always sent Odyssey of the Mind, we've always sent them, I mean, I think this one came about more because of the, the earning, or whatever you call it.
All right, so let me ask this. Let me ask this. Does anyone have a burning desire that's going to keep them up at night, that the policy committee go back and continue to work on the trip policy?
Competition.
Competition.
Policy. We have to do trips.
Anyone have a burning desire?
To talk about.
To direct the policy committee to continue working on this.
Yeah, come up with some ideas.
All right, considering Mr. Mackinote is the only one, I don't hear a burning desire.
Well, if you think that the trip thing is so much easier, why don't you start with that one first?
Well, hang on. Mr. Mackinote thought the trip thing was so much easier.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I would like him to start with that one first.
I heard somebody say that was easy.
Well, don't call it a field trip. Call it curriculum and action trip. If it's related to curriculum, it's approved.
And, and honestly, that may be something that Dr. Alfano can simply dress with administrative procedures that doesn't even require a board policy.
If, if the astronomy class wants to go to Hapton Planetarium, that's okay. We fund that.
And the biggest one we talked about was...
That's easy. That's easy.
And that was, that was one of them that came up at our trips, and I think the administrative...
Now that we've done practice leading?
So the policy committee has completed its work. Thank you very much.
All right. Is this for a German at this point?
Just, just one thing, Mr. Mackinote.
You got to definitely...
This is homework for you.